Hello, welcome to Taxpayer Alert. I'm Al Segala. I'll be your moderator and also President of the Calaveras County Taxpayer Association. We are really privileged to have some excellent talent, some excellent experts on what's happening in local government. And tonight is no exception. Our guest is David Toono, Planning Commissioner, and he's been on the planning board for a while now, so he's got his feet wet. And also, David has quite a background in public service, volunteer work, to try to help bring about a better future. And David, welcome.
Oh, thank you very much, Al. Pleasure.
Well, what do you... Why are you doing this? You can't pay the money. You've put in countless hours in trying to straighten out the FEMA flood insurance issue. You've put many hours in trying to straighten out the Calpers. And so, among the people in our county, there's just a small handful that seem to be plugging away, trying to keep a free society and keep us safe and have a better tomorrow so our kids can live in prosperity. That, from my viewpoint of knowing you, sums it up. Why do you do all this?
Well, years ago, my wife and I started looking for a place to live. We lived in Southern California, in the greater LA area, Ventura County, actually, which is a nice place to live, make no bones about it. But we wanted to buy a home, and for years, we looked all over, all over the West, really, multiple states, practically every Western state. And we spent years doing this. We would fly to a place, we would look around, meet with a real estate agent, and drive, and I don't know how many thousands of miles we drove to looking at places. And then, I discovered Calaveras County. Quite by accident, I happened to be flying in a small plane, and I was going to Columbia Airport to an aviation meet. And I was flying over the countryside, and I thought, "Boy, this is really beautiful." So I went home and said, "We've got to concentrate on this area." And so, we did. And for the next year, we just looked in the greater Calaveras, Tuolumne, and Amador Counties, and then we zeroed in on Calaveras County and the Rancho Calaveras area where we ended up buying. But the goal was, or at least one of my goals, was within what we could afford, obviously, a community where you could really be a part of it, and you could make a difference, perhaps. On the political scene, the government scene, if you are in LA County, you have no influence unless you're a big shot, okay? But in a small community, you can get active in something, and people will say, "Hey." People get to know you, because you get to know people really quickly. I've made more friends in Calaveras County than I ever had in a big city. You can get involved, people notice, people notice that you want to be involved, you want to work, and so they'll say, "Hey, how about you doing this? How about you joining this?" And that's how it happened with me in the broadest sense of the word, and that led to my being on the Planning Commission.
Well, the Planning Commission is not an easy job. The general plan is not a simple document.
Well, I don't know in past years how easy the Planning Commission position has been, but in the last year now, I've been on it for just over a year. And of course, I came into it right when the general plan update was...hit the Planning Commission. So it's been...I came into it just the hardest working, I think, portion of the Planning Commission work in recent years. I'm sure there's always a hot issue coming up every once in a while, but we've had non-stop work on this, and then a few hot-button issues.
I understand that there is some criticism from some groups that the Planning Commission is doing too much work and they're slowing it down, and they shouldn't be spending so much time and trying to protect property rights. What do you think about those concerns?
Well, there was a comment made by one of the people you're talking about in the form of an op-ed in the local paper, the Calaveras Enterprise. And the complaint was that we, the Planning Commission, was looking at the general plan line by line and word for word.
Yes.
And I spoke to a Rotary Group, the West County Rotary Group, shortly thereafter, and I told the audience, "I want to assure you that we are not looking at the general plan line for line, word for word. We are looking at it line for line, word for word, punctuation mark by punctuation mark, and every syllable, okay? Because that's our job." So I guess the criticism was that we were working too hard, and someone didn't want us to work that hard.
Yes.
But nevertheless, we are continuing to work that hard.
Our taxpayer group is so thankful to the Planning Commission, and also the Board of Supervisors who appointed the Planning Commissioners to see so much thought in protecting property rights and trying to bring about prosperity in the future by people being free to do things with their property and be in business without being regulated death or taxed to death. And even though some neighbors will do something that not everybody agrees with, but that's part of life in a free society.
Well, you're pointing to one of the fundamental issues that comes up again and again when we talk about general plan elements and the individual components thereof. So balancing property rights against what the public needs as a whole, or what regulations require us to do. And that's a long list of requirements that comes from the state. So sometimes, we will be discussing the appropriateness of the language of an element, and we will be told by Director Peter Maurer, "I'm sorry, that's a state requirement that I have to be able to show that the county is doing something in this regard." Some elements are more heavily regulated by the state than others. But yes, there's an ongoing balancing act between property rights, which the majority of the Board, of the Commission, I should say, favors.
Yes.
Wherever possible, make sure that the property rights take precedent.
Right.
And we've...I think we've been very good at doing that.
Yeah.
And yes, we've taken some heat over that. I don't know why, but we're going to do it anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, this...we take heat from people who...they have a view of the world of society in a collectivist sort of way. And I made the point at...I just got out of the Planning Commission meeting, but at the previous one, where I kind of spouted off about collectivism, and I said, "The one person who disagrees with me..." Here's the person who disagrees with me. And I held up a picture from a handout that we had just been given on Agenda 21-type stuff.
Okay.
And there was Karl Marx's picture in there.
Yeah.
And I said, "Here's a guy that disagrees with me." And I got a lot of boos from the audience. Okay, fine, but...
Which is very truthful, by the way.
Well, it is.
And fundamental.
It is. It is very fundamental, and it goes way back. This school of thought didn't come about yesterday. This has been going on for hundreds of years.
Yeah, at least 100 years in an organized way.
Yeah.
Get to go back to the French Revolution.
Yes, you could find the words communism and collectivism in literature all the way back...I've been back in the mid-19th century.
Yeah.
It's there.
Well, and also going back to ancient Greece and ancient Rome, we find collectivist activity then, too. The bread and circuses is a good example.
It's all about how people think that they should be governed, or not governed. And this has gone on for ages since civilization. But nevertheless, the general plan, we are marching through the process. We just finished today...and I have a list of all the different elements in front of me so that I can get them right. We just finished the circulation element.
Right.
The roads and how you're going...not just the roads, but other alternative transportation modes.
Yes.
Bicycles, and the needs of pedestrians, and whatnot. So that's in there, too. And that's one of those very heavily regulated state elements, okay? So there has to be compliance with the state. You have to check off the boxes that you are allowing for certain kinds of activities which, you know, maybe are new to some of our people in the community. We finished also previously the conservation and open space element, and that was a very controversial element, because it's talking about locking up land and having open space, and what constitutes an open space, and what constitutes a view, and whose view is it, and who owns that view, and all those kinds of questions came to light in that one. That was a very contentious element.
And when is...where is the point where regulation of land to prevent somebody from doing something on it approach at taking?
Well, that's precisely the questions that come up. For example, on conservation and open spaces, talking about...a lot of it is talking about the look of something, the view. The view from your car window when you're driving down the road, and how nice that hillside looks. Well, that hillside belongs to somebody.
Yeah.
Okay? And they might have some other ideas about what is eventually going to happen to it. Well, there are some in the county who feel that that view belongs to the county as a whole, the people of the county, and therefore, there should be some conditions under which the person develops that land eventually. And so, there's your headbutting.
Yeah.
It's inevitable.
For me, it seems like our founding fathers hit the nail on the head in putting our country together. They seem to recognize a notion that people had natural rights that didn't come from government, or a king, or even a prince, or a committee. Their rights came with people when they're born. There's natural rights, and they identify them as life, liberty, and property. And that same theme seems to be the basis of common law, as opposed to regulatory law. Regulatory law doesn't recognize any such concept. It is whatever the rulers decide. And when it is...when it seems to be dovetailed with common law, protecting people's rights, like speed limits, then it seems to work okay. But when it gets away from recognizing individuals' rights, then it becomes a monster. A good example would be Nazi Germany, Soviet Union, Cuba. All the totalitarian regimes that we've seen in our lifetime always were based on regulatory law, never common law, and never recognized the individual rights that people have. Sometimes, they have a term called group rights, where if you're part of a class, you have a right or entitlement to this or that. And that's 180 degrees away from the concept of individual rights. Do you agree?
Well, I agree in the concept, general concept, absolutely. I also understand that there's a practical side to this. I'm involved in government, so as a Planning Commissioner, I have to understand the state, the state of California, requires us to do various things.
You've got to follow the law.
That's the law, and we have to follow it.
Right.
Where we have leeway is where we have some room to express ourselves, if you will.
Yeah.
But for those people who don't understand the general plan and the requirements, there's a document on the state website called the General Plan Guidelines.
Yes.
And I believe it was updated last in 2003. And if you read that, you will be amazed. I think it's 195 pages. I just was looking at it a few days ago, because I wanted to look at a specific requirement I was looking up. And you will see what we're up against.
Yes.
If you look at that document, you will see what we're up against. Now, those are guidelines, those are not the specific requirements. Nevertheless, there's a lot of specific requirements.
Yeah.
And the state, it's kind of a funny thing, because the state allows the counties to govern their own land use planning, right?
According to their rules.
Exactly. You have control over your land, but here are all the conditions under which you will exercise that control.
Yeah.
So who's really in control of it?
The state.
In large part, that's right.
Yeah.
And the amount of control that the counties have, the cities, goes down and down and down.
Yeah.
As the state government asserts more and more control over land uses.
That's kind of interesting. It seems like our county supervisors are not appointed by the state, even though they're highly regulated, what they can do and can't do by the state, and to a certain extent, the federal government. But since they're elected locally, there is hope that in preserving individual rights, because of the fact that they are elected locally, those that seem to be sympathetic to protecting people's rights would, with good communication, would have a chance of being not only elected, but reelected. And then those that have a different viewpoint, with good communication, would eventually be faded away. At least, that's my hope.
Well, when it comes to promoting yourself as a property rights person...
Right.
Sometimes, it's a hard sell.
Yeah, it is.
Because sometimes, you have to make a decision that's unpopular.
Right.
And we just made one recently. The Planning Commission did, and the Board of Supervisors upheld our decision, and that was on the asphalt plant.
Asphalt plant, yes, I remember that.
Okay, now, that's not general plan. We're off-topic on general plan, but...
Same principle.
But it's that. It's what is permitted on this piece of property, what's the regulations, are they going to be met? As we were told, the Planning Commission was told by our director, Mr. Maurer, on the very first day, the very first time we had to deal with the issue, was the issue is not, "Is this a good idea, a bad idea? Do you like asphalt plants, do you not?" It was none of that. It was whether or not it was permitted in the zone.
Yes.
M2 zone.
I remember that.
Okay? Big discussion about that. Now, the discussion from the public in large part had nothing to do with whether or not it was permitted in the zone, but whether it was a good idea.
Right.
Okay?
Or polluting.
All those issues.
Yeah.
So we have had to make our decisions based upon the boundaries of our decision-making process, but the people who are reacting to that in large part are reacting...are offering a different argument than the one that we have to address.
Right.
And they can't understand, some of them, why we made the decision we did, even though they make these other arguments, and the two don't necessarily go together. Kind of a hard issue to explain, but there was an ordinance that we had to address, and the implementation of the ordinance. And the Environmental Department was involved, was charged with enforcing the ordinance or analyzing the project in light of the ordinance, is a better way to put it.
Yeah.
And the Environmental Department, on their third try, finally, we disagreed with their analysis.
Right.
Okay? And the Board agreed with us that the analysis was flawed. But that didn't go over so well. But it was an interesting argument from the public, because the public criticized the Board and the Planning Commission for disagreeing with the Environmental Department head, the director, the head. And yet, the same people who complained about our disagreeing with that professional disagreed with the professional in the name of Peter Maurer, who determined that the zone was allowed this particular use.
Yeah, starting off, that's the way it was. And it was a good decision.
Right. So we agreed with this professional, and we were criticized for that. We disagreed with the other professional, and we were criticized for that. So it's like, was you...
No matter what, you're going to be criticized.
I agree. And you've got to have a real thick skin to do this job, I'm telling you.
And you've got to have a sense of humor.
Yeah, I see my name in the paper, not always in the best light, but that's the way it goes.
Yeah, that's true. And we're so glad that that little company, basically, you protected their property rights to...they're in an industrial zone. It's...they had a gravel quarry, and an asphalt plant. It's natural along those things. Everywhere is very natural.
Yeah, I don't blame people for complaining about it. Asphalt plants always get complained about, they just do.
Truck traffic.
But a lot of it was just overblown concerns.
Yeah.
And I don't know if the asphalt plant's going to be located there or not. They still have to pass a substantial environmental review process. People thought there was not going to be an environmental review. Not true. There's going to be an extensive environmental review on air quality, and when it comes to an asphalt plant, air quality is the biggest issue by far. It's...the vast majority of all the concerns are with respect to air quality.
Right.
So those will be addressed in that analysis, that review.
Yeah, I understand. There's 21 different regulatory bodies, they have to follow regulations, and it seems like we're a minor part of that. So I don't think I want to be in the asphalt business today, in today's world.
I'm sure they face the same sorts of issues everywhere they go.
Yeah. Well, our taxpayer group really wishes them well. And also, we are sympathetic to the people about truck traffic, and maybe dust and other things like that. And we think that the company will work with that to try to address those concerns as much as they can.
Like I say, I don't know if they'll ever locate there or not. They have to pass a substantial hurdle to do so. If they...if it comes to pass that the plant is operational, I hope that they're great corporate neighbors.
Yeah. Well, Ford Foundation's been around for quite a while, and a lot of our roads have been paved by them.
Well, we have to drive on asphalt, and the nature of the product is that it has to be produced relatively close to where it's used, because it has to arrive hot.
Yes.
That's...I have a blacktop driveway, and so I got a schooling on what is required by the professional who paved the driveway. And it's a tricky process. It's got to arrive hot, otherwise, it's a substandard product.
Yeah. What are some of the other areas of contention that they've experienced in a year? That's enough for one year for you, but I think there's other stuff going on that you also have to handle, and besides the asphalt issue. One of the things, of course, is in the general plan update, in the open space element part of it, the question is, "What is a taking?" In other words, can government just say, "You can't use your land, because we want to have open space," with no compensation? Can government do that?
Well, no, in the strictest sense of the word, no. But there...in the open space element, for example, there were issues about developing on hillsides.
Right.
Okay? Now, the point that I made...well, the issue was...I'll back up a little bit. One of the issues was, if there's a hillside and a bluff on that, that's a nice visual viewscape, they're called, in general plan ease.
Yeah.
Okay? Viewscapes. And I always have to chuckle when I hear that word, because it's somebody's property that you're calling a viewscape.
Yeah.
Okay? And the issue was, well, should you allow homes to be developed on that ridge line of that hill?
Yeah.
Because it's an attractive ridge line, and you put a home on there, it's not so attractive anymore. So I thought, "Well, look, if I own a piece of property that's got this hill and it's a ridge line, that's where I want my home, because that's the best view that you can possibly have."
Those people would be happy living near it.
That's right, of course. And that's where you're going to put the million-dollar home, right? With the million-dollar view.
Right.
So if the rest of us driving down the road, who we used to see nothing but a hillside with a nice little bluff on it, and now there's a million-dollar home up there, does that mean the view is gone, and it's been destroyed by this gorgeous home? No.
It might be enhanced.
I'll tell you what.
It might be enhanced.
Here's a good example. There's a community in California, in Northern California, that makes a lot of money selling tours of their neighborhood. It's called 17 Mile Drive. You ever been on it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Over there, Carmel?
Yeah.
Pebble Beach?
Yeah.
You have to pay money to drive through that neighborhood, because it is so beautiful to look at.
Beautiful homes.
Beautiful homes, and views, and whatnot. And I've done it a number of times. Every time I'm in that area, I go through there, because it's gorgeous. I like looking at the homes, and the golf cars, and the sea, and whatnot. So building homes on property doesn't, in my view, destroy the look of the property.
Right.
And in any case, it's somebody's property, and if they want to develop it to its fullest potential, barring unusual circumstances, they should be able to do that.
It's bringing...it's just change. We have to admit that life is not static. It's always changing. And even if human beings didn't bring about changes, nature would.
I expect other people to want to move here, to Calaveras County, beautiful Calaveras County, for the same reasons that I did.
Yeah.
I don't think I have the right to close the door behind me.
I understand.
And no one else does, either.
Yeah, that's true. Peter Maurer, our planning director, who has a good sense of humor, and I'm amazed at the amount of...how he gets beat up by everybody, and still comes out on his feet. And he mentioned, he was giving a talk to a group just a few days ago, and he mentioned, gave a little bit of history on zoning. And he said it was in, I think, the 1920s, that the Supreme Court case in which zoning was considered by the Supreme Court to be a legitimate use of police power. And we didn't have a chance to get into that a little bit further, but it would seem, if the Constitution does grant zoning to be a legitimate form of police power, it would seem to be limited by other parts of the Constitution that prevent takings and things that would be hurtful to the rights to life, liberty, and property. And if that's true, which I think it is, but not positive, then that should be where we're coming from in trying to protect our free society, is that, yeah, we can have zoning. Zoning can bring about harmony in uses, but not destroy people's rights to use their property, only to allow their uses not to harm the neighbors or the public. That, to me, makes sense. And it seems to be in harmony with that common law we talked about.
Well, you're talking about the basic concept of how much government is too much and how much is not enough.
Yeah.
I believe that there is a very legitimate role for planning.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay?
Especially with streets and roads and...
Correct. And where you put residential versus where you put factories, and where you put commercial.
Right.
Okay? All of that requires planning, and it has to be...there's professional people that understand how designs work, and how traffic patterns work. So there is an extremely...I think we've all been to communities that look like they were built helter-skelter...
Yeah.
And with no plan at all.
Right.
And there's very little value in the property. So good planning does enhance a community. It does enhance property values.
Yeah.
And there's a role for it.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay? You've got to understand where maybe the state pushes too hard, or a interest group is pushing too hard in a direction, and whether or not that's legitimate.
Looking ahead, 30 seconds left.
Okay.
Where do you see us going?
Well, we are, as a Planning Commission, are meeting almost every week now to get the general plan update, our portion of it, done as soon as possible. We are down to the kind of the short strokes. The next element that we have to deal with is the safety element, and then the public facilities and services element. Those are pretty small. And then, the community plans will be addressed.
Thank you, David. Thanks for watching Taxpayer Alert. See you next time. See you next time.